Mike, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If you would like an agenda, they are in a plastic envelope on the walls and your backs. Before we go too far, though, I will ask Fred to stand and listen to the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first on the agenda is community notes. Community notes is a time where anybody who needs anything to say is not on the agenda. And that we're not going to be speaking now. And now is the time to do that. And if anyone wants to, please come to the podium and let us know who you are and take a few minutes.
Good evening. My name is Linda Fox. I help in lawfare directly from the city of Waterville. And I have some terrific, fantastic news to share with you this evening. The city has been a proud partner of Helping Northern Kennebec since the 1980s. And the coalition works to identify and solve local health problems. Recently, we were recognized as one of 24 organizations nationwide and received funding for a new community health program. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, the project director for Helping Northern Kennebec, Fran Mullin.
Thanks, everyone. Hi. Thanks, everybody. And thanks, Linda, very much for that nice introduction. I have some information about the project that we're working on. I want to make it really short and sweet, but it is extremely exciting. And I'd love to take any questions you have after our speaker. Just to wrap it up, that'd be great. So, yeah, so I'm Fred Mullin, and I'm the director of Helping Northern Kennebec, which is the Healthy Maine Partnership, the public health program here in the greater Waterville area. The initiative that Linda was just talking about is called SCALE, which stands for, of course, you have all these great acronyms, Spreading Community Accelerators Through Learning and Evaluation. And what it actually means to me is Healthy Waterville. We just developed a new logo. Check it out. Healthy Waterville, using the Waterville branding and our Healthy Northern Kennebec River logo. We have partners here on the sheet that I'd like to just mention. The city of Waterville is a great partner in this project. Waterville Main Street, Family Violence Project, Manland Hospital, Main General, of course, KB CAP, and Kennebec Behavioral House, as well as many other partners. We are improving, we're working together to improve the community, which is very exciting. As Linda mentioned, we're the only SCALE community that was selected in Maine. And so a national spotlight is really on Maine right now. People have heard of Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They're the ones that are focusing on this project. And they'll be looking at what we're doing here in Waterville and hoping to spread it around the country. One of the things that we're doing in Waterville that's really special and one of the things I think that they chose us for, that we're really good at collaborating and work really hard to work together. And we work across boundaries so that we're really working with healthcare and education and mental health services and education and government and whoever else we can bring to the table. So some of the new folks that we want to bring to the table are people who have not usually had a chance to come and talk about health issues. We're looking at community health issues, too. Bigger picture things like healthy food and active living. Those are things that people in our community have said are real priorities that not everyone has access to. So for things like the farmer's market, which everybody in our focus groups, we had 11 focus groups last year, everyone said these are really important issues. We understand that healthy food is important. We really, we really can't use the farmer's market that much. It seems like the food is kind of expensive. And maybe it's just not for us. But we want to bring people together and figure out ways where everyone can benefit from the real great assets that Waterville has. So I just want to thank the city of Waterville. We're going to be doing this project for the next 18, 20 months or so. And we're going to be forming an action team. I'd like to invite people to participate, especially people who are here today, obviously showed up, so you're interested in what's going on in Waterville. I'd also very much like to thank Linda, who's on our Healthy Northern Kennebec Board of Directors and on the Healthy Waterville Steering Committee. Ann Deverge and Matt Skay, so they're focused on parks and trails. And Mayor Isco, Mike Roy, and Rosemary, as well, for coming to our event on May 28th, which is a great community event. And we're excited to kick off our program. So thanks. Any questions? Go ahead, Linda.
I'm going to add a couple of things that they do that really makes a huge difference. So I participate and I brought our city assessor into the process to look at safe walk for students at the law school. And last Friday, it has got to be the best thing coming at 7:30 in the morning to see the students heading up to being dropped off at the high school, and we did the safe walk back. And when I had an opportunity on yesterday, as a matter of fact, to be at the Mitchell School, and I was doing, reading a book, and I happened to mention, ask how many people love, walk to school, would love to walk. And I shared the experience to the third graders of what the law school students get to do. So they're excited.
That's good.
So I just let G. Reed and company know that this is one of the best things going. And for the parents and everyone involved, it's just terrific. You people put good work.
Thank you very much. It's not, it's not us people, it's everybody. And I think that's our strength, is that we're all working together to make it work for the kids and for their parents and for the whole community. Because one of the things, like somebody said the other day, you know, when we all do better, we all do better. It's like, you know, when we all feel better, we all feel better, too. So it's really a group effort and really a community collaboration. And I want to invite people to participate. Do you know Linda? Talk with Linda. You know Rosemary? Talk with Rosemary. If you want to give me a call, please do. And thank you. I have more information if anybody wants additional information. Lots and lots of good information. Keep it on a short, short speed. And we're also inviting all the councilors to come to Waterville on the 28th. So thank you.
You? Do we have any notes? Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Heather McHale. Everybody knows me. Today, the Boy Scouts, we only have one here now, but there's supposed to be more coming from Troop 436 at the Pleasant Street United Methodist Church. And they're here tonight working on their community service badge. So, and I'm the mom of an Eagle Scout that's been here many times. Okay?
Thank you.
I just have one thing to say. May 25th is Memorial Day. I'd like to make a testament to serve our country. And to the great things that have been done here, we would not be able to raise the tree out yet. So I just want to take our veterans.
Community notes? Any buttons? Cindy?
Yeah, I have some things to add. Recently, on May 11th, last week, I attended a broadband interest group at Kennebec Mall with municipal government headquarters in Panfield. Many towns and municipalities participated in this group, and there was broad general discussion. One thing remains certain, that there is, there is a demand in all our communities for high download and upload speeds and broadband internet connections and usage. It is a proven fact that economic development is further encouraged by communities that show a serious interest in making things. Those contacts are welcome providers and are establishing committees to further enhance our resources so that we can be an attraction for better high-paying jobs and established high-technology infrastructure outside businesses will be attracted to. I encourage the council to look more seriously at this, and I will continue working as the city's representative on this match. And another noted concern for the city's budget, I learned recently within my word of two influential residential families absolutely preparing and putting up their homes for sale. One family on Forest Park is now paying in lieu of $7,000 annually just city property taxes and has told me it is unsustainable for them to live here anymore. Some may think, well, this must have, they must have a large home and lots of land. But I can attest to the fact that although the home is fairly large, it is only because it is handicap accessible in every room. Mill rates are nudging upwards to 30 as we speak, and as I have said before, we're living in one of the most affluent neighborhoods within the city. This is a family that has raised their child here and become active members of the community, along with climate and low property taxes is where they intend to go. Another family on First Rangeway has been struggling to maintain their standard way of living for a long time. A man has had to relinquish his better-paying job because of the economic recession, which still bites at us today, and except a lower-scale paying position with simple benefits to survive. Although both husband and wife work, it also has become unsustainable for them to live here in Waterville, where the property taxes again look to be rising for the budget that has little to no hope of not having some sort of tax increase attached to it. This city has been affected by the state reductions across the board, as has other municipalities, that is not a question. I am sympathetic to that. Administrative raises without concern for our economic plight is not ethical, practical, or acceptable. However, in light of the plight of many of my constituents, I can attest to the fact that I have not supported a budget that is not financially sympathetic to the people that put me here. This budget would have to be well under a mill to flat before I would ever support it. Therefore, again, I appeal to this council to consider the people you represent and know the pulse of your neighborhoods. Morphosis ill signs will happen and high-paying jobs will ultimately be extinguished. Thank you.
Cindy? Just in terms of economic and community notes.
I'd like to respond to that, if I could. I'm Nancy Wayans of Eight Pond Place. I wonder if this council would consider asking your assessor to evaluate...
Nancy, could you come to the podium just for the video camera?
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if this council would consider at some point in time asking the assessor to evaluate a comparable house in Waterville to the surrounding communities where people may be going, and also compare what they pay for that house. I think that would be interesting information to have. I don't have the answers.
But then we'll be, uh, who might, on the revalue, are they comparing, are they compared, what are we making compared to?
It's part of the revaluation project that's going on that will be finished a year from now. The people on the field measure every single home and then come back after all of that work is done citywide and look at sales that over a two-year period, I think it's two years.
Just in Waterville or elsewhere, or surrounding towns as well?
I, I believe it's a regional sales approach that they look at. And so from that sales analysis, they know that for a two-bedroom ranch of 1,800 square feet, the price range is this to that. And for a three-bedroom colonial, it's this. And so they develop rates for all those different properties. And those rates are what are put into effect, and we'll have new bills in August 2016 based on that revaluation.
They, when they assign a specific value, is it because obviously they're going to come up with a range? Do they have a default, like they go into like a mid-range or low-range or high-range?
Yeah, that's...
How do they narrow it to this specific value, you know?
That's a question.
That'd be interesting to ask.
Right. That's a question that Paul Keston, we can much better answer. But what we have planned to do anyway is once they finish the field work, is to have them come in or have Paul come in and say, okay, folks, we've finished the field work. The next part is now to analyze sales. And I may be wrong. It may just be sales in Waterville. We'll have to ask that question when we get to that point. But they've got another, quite a few months' worth of field work before they get to the point of saying, okay, now let's look at all the sales and figure out what the rates are for different properties.
I mean, I'm not a Realtor, but I know when I bought my house, it was assessed against houses that were similar in the Waterville area. I think it would, I don't think it would make sense to assess a house in a city with something in a place like Sydney or Oakland.
Because they don't have the same service.
Right. If we have a 30-go rate, it's worth less than...
They don't have the same services. You live in a city, they don't have...
Sidewalks, street lights.
That's right. They'll use the other town as a comparable.
Comparable sales, and they have to have it.
But then they make all these factors that will change, based on trash delivery, based on tax rates, based on...
I mean, anywhere you go in the country, if you live in a city, it's going to be more expensive. I mean, that's just part of living in the city of Waterville. And it doesn't mean that we have to like that, but the services of living within a city, with the conveniences of living in a city, it's going to be a little bit more expensive. So I don't think it would make sense to compare a home on First Rangeway to a home out in Oakland or Sydney.
Hey, we support a lot of things, like a library and opera house and Medicare, Cory Road, a pool, an airport, a lot of things that a town, a city doesn't.
Yeah, but that rocks taxes. That doesn't affect the location of the house.
Doesn't affect the location of the house, affects taxes.
Hi, Trishiki, 44, you're just a partway, I'm not the taxpayer there, but my, my, my... Actually, I just wanted to ask a question. If any studies, we're also planning on selling, going away, it's really expensive to stay there, after just obtaining that last year. So everything just keeps going on, you know, same old story. But the question is actually, have we done a comparison for, actually, sorry, my public speaking skills are out of, a comparison on renters and non-profits organizations in Waterville, specifically the percentage of those things as opposed to the actual tax-paying citizens, which actually is going to end up applying to so many things that we're all concerned about these days. The trash, the recycling, the, the, the normal, all of that. Is there an available report on just how many actual taxpayers there are?
Uh, yeah, we have, yeah.
There is?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could give you a number of how many taxpayers there are and how many rental properties we have, the split between the two.
I would actually love to see that.
Yeah, yeah. If you come by the town office at any time...
Send Mike an email, M. Roy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mike, is the figure of rental properties in town actually more than the tax...
Fifty-one.
Right. Actually, I think the number I got from Ann Deverge just recently, it was up to 52%.
And isn't it the case that nonprofits...
52%.
Make up like 30% of our tax, or our land base, I should say.
Yeah, 29% of our land base is occupied by nonprofits. So, you know, almost a third of our land base is nonprofit owned. And then 52%, all the housing units are rented. 48% are single-family homes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just add, and there's a great resource on the City of Waterville page, and it's, you can actually look at your taxes as compared to everyone else's. And I went up and down my street checking my neighbors and mine to see if they seemed similar. But that's a great resource to have online. So thank you for that.
Any other community notes? Number one, spice. Okay. Next up, the approval of the consent agenda is clear, the motion to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Another second.
Second.
Any other session?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Both.
Good business. Resolution 652015.
Our resolution provides for appointment of a solid race committee. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. The municipal solid race committee be appointed as approved under the tax purpose statement, including proposed members. The primary focus of this committee will be to research all available race disposal options, once the city's contacted the Knottstra entity recovery facility per, inspired in 2013.
Move to it, Al.
But I think you've heard me say many times that this question about what happens with our trash when the perk plan contract ends is one of the absolute biggest questions that we're going to be facing in the next three years, absolutely so. I think with this committee, we can take the adequate time to look at all of our options. Do we stay with PER? Do we go into another partnership? Do we just haul to Norwich Walk, get the landfill there, leave our trash there? Number of different options. And so I, I'm pleased we can have a committee that looks just at that one thing. One of the proposed committee members is here tonight, Nick Champagne, and family. I think, I think there's any, of course, three, have three proposed councilors on a group. I expect that we start meeting in June sometime.
Any more session? All those in favor?
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody who volunteered. Resolution 662015.
Our resolution provides for establishing hours for voter registration, whereas Title 21A MRSA Section 122.8 requires special evening hours for voter registration on three hours of five specific days before an election unless a municipal officer establishes different hours. And dear as well by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officer as follows, that the city council hereby establish voter registration hours from Monday through Friday in AM to 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday again, with no special evening hours.
Move to it, Al.
Second. Any discussion?
Any reason why we've chosen not to have evening hours? Do we find that it was...
Correct. On, on election years, even numbered years, gubernatorial or presidential, we do conduct evening hours and we'll have a few people come in. For our June election particularly, and in October, November, it's, there's really no need.
So this resolution is just dealing with the election in June?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor? A vote. Resolution 772015.
Our resolution provides for increase in municipal outdoor pool fees. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officer as follows. That the municipal pool fees be increased as follows. Daily seasonal passes, resident family up to four individuals residing within the same household, $40. Daily admitted admission rates, children 17 and under, residents $3, non-residents $5. Adults 18 and over, residents $4, non-residents $7. Seniors 65 and over, residents free, no change, non-residents $5, no change. Swim lessons per lesson, tiny talks ages 3 to 5, residents $30, non-residents $40. Swim lessons, residents $50, non-residents $60, no change.
Move to it, Al.
Second.
Any discussion? All those...
Matt, you're pretty confident this is going to break, break even for us?
Right. Based on the historical numbers over the last, excuse me, six or eight years, we should, we should be breaking even. It's time that they're raised. They're still very affordable. Bank, plenty of bank for the buck for the, for the prices, for sure.
Good one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? A vote? Next order, 682015.
An order providing for approval to purchase equipment for cemetery maintenance. Be issued by order by city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the city's director of conservation be authorized to purchase the following equipment for by maintenance of the Pine Grove Cemetery. Commercial mower, $6,000, push mower, $500, leaf blower, $1,000, weed whackers, $800. In a total amount not to exceed $8,500, and that said property appropriated from the cemetery's perpetual care account.
Move to it, Al.
Second. Mike, is this a result of our recent change of plans for the cemetery?
Yes. Yes, exactly. We need this equipment to do the work in the cemetery on a short-term basis. What does short-term mean? I, I think it means the rest of this season. With Matt's help and Public Works' help, we've been able to get out and work to get the cemetery in shape for Memorial Day. I can say right now, it's not going to be as perfect as we would like it to be. There's so much work left over from the fall that wasn't completed, that we've had to tackle that first. And now we're trying to mow the grass and get everything ready for next Monday. It's, it's not going to be the way we'd like it to be, but certainly will look better than it did three weeks ago. So our cemetery contractor's gone. I expect that we'll do it all through this year. And I think that we should look at entertaining bids next year and comparing it to what it cost us to do it this year. And, I mean, that's the benefit of us doing it now. Now we know.
I think it would be prudent to be, use this as an example that we need to be over there in the fall to make sure that all of our students get in there, and they have a lot more fall. Obviously, this year we're going to, it sounds like it's going to be us doing it.
Right.
Some of this might have been avoided if we had been over there in the fall.
Is it made comparable pricing for this equipment?
Uh, you, Matt buys a lot of that equipment. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Is it made comparable pricing? Have we looked at different pieces of the question?
Oh, I, I think so.
Yeah.
A, a few, right.
They're, they're pretty standard. This commercial mower is pretty standard across the board. We got this estimate of $6,000 from Teaks. And there, Hammond has the same units for about the same price, so.
Just seems like $1,000 for a leaf blower is fairly expensive.
I think these are...
This is a walk-behind, gas-powered.
Yeah, that's not the kind of driver that...
Yeah, it's what you need for there, for sure. It's not anything extra, I promise.
The picking up leaves is, we found out, one of the biggest jobs in that cemetery.
Yeah, a tree acreage is incredible.
Huge number of trees in there. Yeah. Yeah. So I want to give Matt and Bob Gilchrist, the Public Works, credit for stepping right up and doing this without a lot of disan...
And this money is not coming out of the town coffers anyway. It's coming out of the cemetery's fund account.
Coming out of the cemetery perpetual care bond. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. It was, I would own there myself.
Yeah.
It was a horrific scene a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
So the fact that it is where it is, it works for you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, and they've done a wonderful job. It was...
Well, thanks.
The amount of leads that...
I sure know this.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? A vote?
I'm going to do the review.
If you want to do the second reading? I know I have to psych out the second reading.
Both should do the second reading by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
An order providing for approval to purchase equipment for cemetery maintenance.
Move to it, Al.
Second. All those in favor?
In a couple months, that's all you need.
That's right.
Two readings, because the new charter takes effect July 1st. You go from three readings on an order to two.
Are we going to do a roll call in the second? Nope?
Only on the third.
Oh.
There, we know there is.
Should I do a roll call in the second?
I haven't even figured this out.
But those two readings would be on two different nights. We wouldn't do two votes in one. That does seem redundant.
Order 692015.
Motion read by title only?
Second.
I thought you did it in one.
And the vote on title only is?
Second.
We, we have a vote on title, title only.
This is for new 69...
All those in favor, read by title only.
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to it, Al.
Second. All those in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to it, Al.
Second. All those in favor? Order 702015.
Motion read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to it, Al.
Second. All those in favor? Order 712015.
Motion read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
An order providing for authorizing the issuance of $4,507,000, $507,000 in revenue obligation securities 2015 Thomas College project.
Move to it, Al.
Second.
All those in favor? Order 722015.
An order providing for sale of city property 12 Gorden Street. Be hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the city manager be authorized to accept the high bid of $6,300 submitted by Mr. and Mrs. David Corricker for the vacant tax-acquired property located at 12 Gorden Street. and that the balance of said funds after payment of all outstanding taxes be placed in the city's capital improvement reserve fund.
Move to it, Al.
Second.
All those in favor?
There's about $3,700 owed in tax money on that one. So we'll put $6,300 minus 37 into that fund. Three items. Under manager's report, a reminder tomorrow night, not in this room, but two floors down, there's a meeting on pay-as-you-throw at 7 o'clock. Not only on pay-as-you-throw, we're going to touch on recycling, the bags that we all use, the question about bulky waste. And the third thing, fourth thing is EcoMaine will do a short thing about recycling education. So tomorrow night, 7 o'clock downstairs.
Did I read somewhere that actually next Wednesday that EcoMaine was going to do it?
They're doing one next Wednesday also.
Oh, I see.
On their own. Yep. They're going to try to do as much, some recycling education, because actually in our contract with EcoMaine, they are required to do educational things.
Presentations.
Yep, presentations.
And they're at the farmer's market now. They have a booth set up where, I mean, they're out there with, showing people what they can recycle and, and... So they're going to be out there, I think, for the next three, three or four more weeks.
Three or four weeks, right.
Out there as well in the farmer's market.
Just a question to the council about another budget meeting at some point. We don't have any budget meetings yet. So...
When do we know the state figures?
I'd assume it was, we were waiting until after the school became more clear. Is that still the thinking?
That's going to be... Um, and I believe Council Boucher and I and Eric Haley, we, can we get a conference for next week?
Uh, I think it's next week.
We will be meeting with Eric Haley also.
So we should wait to schedule.
It might be more productive at this point and then people can continue to look at. I have not heard anything, you know, Mike, you said you've heard some suggestions. So if you don't like what was presented for last meeting, give us some alternatives. We'll continue to talk.
Maybe at our first June council meeting, we can schedule some budget meetings.
Okay. Now that brings up another question because it takes three weeks for the budget to be adopted, right? And you have only two meetings in June. So...
I think one of our budget meetings is a special meeting, right?
Right.
That's right.
So that's going to, you know, I know that's been one of your concerns, Council Boucher, but in order for us to have a budget vote before July 1, we really should take a budget vote on June 2. Even if it's a number that none of us are happy with, just to get the first one out of the way. Get the first load out of the way.
So, but what happens when that number changes? Do we then go back and amend?
We just amend it.
We amend it.
Yeah, just amend the order.
Yep.
We can always schedule a special council meeting, but right now you only have two in June.
Just to make sure we don't get a third reading until we're done.
Yeah, right.
Why don't we schedule another meeting later in June, maybe the 2nd?
We could do that June 2nd. Schedule another council meeting.
Eric doesn't expect to hear until the end of June on his budget.
He was hoping for the middle.
Tom, run all the budget statement by last.
How cool is that?
Tom Longstaff, resident of City of Waterville. The state budget, we were, we're working on that every day now. Our statutory adjournment date is June 17. The hope is that the budget would be complete by that time. It's entirely possible that it won't, that it will go closer to the end of June. We all want to avoid the shutdown that would come on July 1. However, the good news is that as we work on the budget, although it won't be absolutely living in stone, we should have some pretty good indication of what is the most likely numbers that you will have for revenue sharing, for our education, and some of those other factors. So stay in touch with us and we'll get your information as quickly as we can. As I say, the appropriations committee is literally working on it seven days a week at the moment. That's all I can offer because, well, that's where we are. And I know that your budget is contingent upon the state budget, but thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Are we, any of the taxes going in?
For those things that we're sitting on.
Uh, anybody else? Go to your, go to your.
Yes.
Right, go to yours.